Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to this school committee meeting, and I will call it to order at 7:05. I'm going to go ahead and do roll call. Ms. Erin DeMello.
Present.
Ms. Kathy LaPryori.
Present.
Mr. Wallace McKenzie.
Present.
Mr. Timothy Messier.
Present.
Ms. Martina Shea is excused, and Mr. Spiro Tomo is also excused. Can we go ahead and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Input. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak in anything regards to what's not on the agenda tonight? Please go ahead and step forward. Right over to the podium, if you would, please. And if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Yep, Megan Norad, at 815 Charlton Street. All right, so I'm here as a concerned parent of a second grader in the school district, mainly because I got really, really excited when I heard that Governor Baker was going to lift the mandate on February 28th. And when I expressed that excitement to other people who work in the school district, the response I got was, well, it's going to be up to the individual school systems, and in Southbridge, that mandate is likely going to still be in place, so don't get your hopes up. And, I mean, my daughter is a really great student, and she is very confused and upset. Every Sunday night, we have a fight about it, because she doesn't understand why some of her friends or her cousins in other states and districts don't have to wear a mask, but she does. So, I am here just to, with some questions, mainly, and I don't expect any answers to the questions. I've tried to find some of the answers without success. I haven't, I even tried looking at minutes from other school board meetings, and it just said, there was nothing, no files in the folder, so I had trouble even finding that. So, if Southbridge continues with this mask mandate, I've been trying to figure out why. We know it's not for the safety of the children at this point. So, the two things that I've come up with is, when trying to figure out the answer to this, is that the children are still being forced to wear masks for the what-ifs, what if they spread it to someone else that are more high-risk? And I don't think that we should be masking our children based on the what-ifs. We are guilting the children into wearing the mask and saying, well, you have to do it, or else grandma might die. Like, there are kids that have had relatives pass away and are terrified to take their masks off, because that message has been out there for them. Don't do it, someone you know might die if you don't have your mask on, and that's not good, obviously, for the mental health of our children. So, saying that we are trying to protect others by our students wearing it, that's at the expense of our students and our children and their mental health. So, my next thought, if it's not about, you know, the spread of everything and having those high-risk people not get it because of the children, then maybe if we decide to continue with this mandate, my other main thought was that it has to do with money. That, I have read that other school systems have decided that they're going to keep it, because if they don't, they might not get the grant money that they are used to getting. And in Southbridge, obviously, that is, I'm guessing, is likely a cause, but I couldn't find the data to support that. So, again, whether it's money-related or to prevent other relatives from getting sick, it doesn't feel justified to continue having mandated masks for the students. And, the other thing, I've talked to many teachers and staff and asked them if they have provided input on their feelings about the mask mandates. Has anybody on the board, has anybody sent them a survey, a link? How do you feel about it? Is it disruptive to the classroom? And nobody has provided any input. So, who's making the decision? Is it just up to you guys and the superintendent? Because, as a parent, I've never gotten anything asking how I feel about it, if I think that it's needed. The teachers haven't. I'm not sure who's making this decision, but I really feel like knowing how the community feels about this is, should be considered before that decision, whether to keep the mandate, is there or not. Children, it is a distraction in the classroom, and I do have some specific examples, but bottom line, if you, parents should be able to decide if they want their children to continue to wear the mask. And children should not be yelled at, ostracized, or kicked out of schools over a mask, which we know is happening in other places. Again, we don't know the long-term consequences of keeping the children masked, and I don't think we should be gambling with their mental health and overall happiness. So, I beg you to consider some of these, and may, survey the staff, survey the community before this decision is made. That's it. Thank you.
So, if I may, if you would like, you can stay there as well. The receiver and superintendent has worked with the Mass State Board of Health, followed CDC guidelines, and spoken with health experts in regards to keep, whether or not to keep the mask mandates as the pandemic has progressed. So, I'm sure-
I know, I've read that.
Yeah, give me just a moment, please. So, I do believe that the decision whether or not to keep it is going to be held within those same regards and discussions. As far as what other school districts have decided, whether they opted in to continue to keep with the mask mandate or out, is the subject of the decision between the receiver or their superintendent, who most likely has also consulted the same experts, and the school board. We don't have the voting authority as to whether or not to choose, because we are under receivership. So, that decision is usually engaged with us in conversation, but ultimately decided by the receiver. But there are other school districts that have implemented other safety precautions outside of masks and outside of health restrictions. When I was growing up, we weren't allowed to have regular backpacks. We had to have clear mesh, for if that kid decides to bring a gun to school that one day. So, decisions like that are-
Very different.
Well, decisions like that are district to district, and are circumstantial. So, you know, it, there may be districts that have a lower spread throughout their community, there may be districts that have a higher spread, but in the end, it has to be made with a discussion with those health experts, with the mental health of the students in mind. I know personally speaking, my son doesn't care. He wears his mask out when he goes to the store anyway, because he says, I haven't gotten a cold since I wore a mask, so I'm just going to keep wearing a mask. That's his decision. I don't push him one way or the other, but, you know, it's up to-
But that is his decision.
Yeah.
But they are not given the decision in the schools right now.
Yeah, I mean-
And they're being yelled at, classes are being disrupted when other teachers come in and say, all right, so-and-so, put your mask up. Oh, you're not wearing a mask, you're not wearing a mask. It's like, how often do teachers have to stop their lessons just to say, oh, pull up your mask, put it over your nose? It's ridiculous.
And I can, I can respect the distraction of it, but, you know, there's also the distraction of cell phones. When you and I were growing up, we didn't have cell phones. We did not have them in the class, and how many times does a teacher have to stop to say, hey, put your cellphone away, you can't be using it in class? Or has to take it away, or whatever the case may be. The bottom line is, those kinds of decisions have to be made with the health of the community in mind. Again, I'm not qualified to make a medical decision. I'm a mechanic. I can tell you whether or not something's wrong with your car, but I can't tell you whether or not what you're doing is healthy. So, those decisions have to be made, speaking with health experts, what's best for the student body, what's best for the faculty and staff, and that decision-
But if they're not being asked, how are, like, how can they make that decision for our community if we're not being asked?
It's, it has definitely been a contentious point of debate, and I can respect everybody's opinion and decision, but in the end, whether it's a school board voting, there's discussions that may or may not involve the community, and that's what this public input is for, for you to be able to give your, and speak your piece. And I do appreciate, by the way, you're one of the first people to come to a school committee meeting and attend in quite some time, so I do appreciate you having some input. That's what this opportunity is for. So, I do appreciate you speaking your mind. That's very important. We need people engaged with this, but this is that platform. So, if people don't come here and speak their mind-
Right.
The receiver has to make a decision surrounded by the people that know more than what we do and what he does. He has to talk to those that are educated and those that can discern the data and the science behind it, and make the best decision for what the community's going to be, and other districts are going to do the same thing. And some have opted out, some have opted in. I'm sure there's more votes to come as the months continue to go, but it's definitely going to be a contentious point of debate as time goes on, so, you know, when a decision is made, and when he makes an announcement, which they've been, the district has been really good with communicating online to parents at home, using the e-calls, letters home, things of the sort. This school committee meeting is definitely an opportunity for be able, for you to be able to voice your opinion, and I do greatly appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something, Dr. Valar, or are you all set?
I can comment when we're doing our presentation, because I think there's some relevant information.
Cool. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak to the school committee regarding an item not on the agenda this evening? All righty, so seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Four, the Receiver's Announcements, Section A, Budget Update FY23. So, I'll hand it over to Dr. Valar and Mr. Racine.
Great, thank you very much, and I appreciate your response to the questions, and I also appreciate our parent coming forth with her strong opinion about the topic. You know, it will be woven in throughout our presentation this evening, talking about the impact this pandemic has had on not only the Southbridge Public Schools, but public schools across our country. I think we all have grown tired with mitigation strategies, we have grown tired of hearing about the debates of effectiveness of different approaches to this, and clearly, there are very strong opinions. I do want to be clear, and again, I appreciate the chairman's response to the question, but this is a matter where, as receiver for the Southbridge Public Schools, the decision does rest squarely on top of me. It is not a matter that this school committee has been asked to rule on because of the impact of receivership, which is why I'm very appreciative in your approach to responding to the question. But to be very clear, I'm the guy that has to make that decision with the guidance and input from the Southbridge Board of Health, and I have been in constant communication with them throughout the pandemic. Also, we work very closely with the town manager, and the town has put together, over the course of the past two years, a committee to manage, you know, the response to COVID-19 here in Southbridge. But to be very, very clear, yeah, at the end of the day, unpopular decision rests with me, not for the folks sitting up there. I think that's important, because, you know, this is one of those instances where it's not always going to make people happy. There are passionate voices on either side. At this point, you know, I'll let the cat out of the bag, due to extensive conversation, our decision, and my decision for the district, will be we are going to remain masked through March, unless there's a significant change in the positivity rate here in town, which remains quite high, over 13%. And, at a point when, if vaccination rates increase, they're also quite low here in Southbridge. So, as of last week, 17 individuals at least were hospitalized in town for COVID-19 infections. We remain in close contact with the hospital, that's how I know that information. Things are getting much better, so maybe we can be out of this and release everyone from masks. I think everyone would be happy for that. I do want to comment, I'm in the schools quite a bit, they're not the disruption that they may appear to be. Kids are very good about wearing their mask. A very common thing is this, and kids are pointed to and have to raise their mask, because they slide down on little faces, and kids are very good about it. It's not been a sense of discipline, a situation where kids have been in trouble at school for this. We've made it clear from the beginning. It's an educational, it's just teaching and learning. But I look forward to that day, hopefully, maybe even sooner, we'll remove the mask, but for right now, we do have the mandate to continue through March, and then we're going to see. So, with that said, there is a, oh, there's actually one other thing, very important. Grant money is not dependent upon policies around COVID-19 mitigations. So, the grant money issued from the federal government, through the state government, to local governments, there's no threat of us losing funding because of a decision on whether or not we were masked. I actually had a conversation with the commissioner last Friday, where he asked, he said, what is Southbridge's position going to be with masks? And I said, well, I'm still in conversation with the local Board of Health, and so we had that conversation. There's no edict, there's no mandate, it's a local decision based on facts on the ground in the town. So, regardless of the outcome of mask, not mask, et cetera, the COVID funding that we've received, we will continue to have, that's not going anywhere. So, I think that's good news for all of us. So, moving on, tonight, really, we're focused on what are the revenue projections that are helping us shape our budget request. Again, quick overview of the budget process, it is a little different because of the receivership, but essentially, we're going to put together a budget that will be presented to the town council. I've communicated to Chairman Murch that my intention is to have a public hearing with this body and present our budget at that time, so that'll be prior to the final presentation for the town council, which will be later this spring. But tonight, we're going to talk about revenues, because there's some significant news around the governor's proposed budget, how it impacts our funding moving forward. I also want to discuss very briefly the impact of the pandemic on our budgeting and our thinking around our instructional program. We're going to talk about our enrollment projections, because again, that's very important as we look at our expenditures. A little more in-depth on the Student Opportunity Act, which again, financially impacts us. Discussion of the state aid overall, and then our budget format for this year. We worked with the Education and Human Services Subcommittee this fall to agree upon a budget format that would be acceptable and for the town council, to avoid any type of acrimony as we move through this process. So, we want to share with you what that looks like. And again, we'll bring back much more detail on the budget at the public hearing in months to come. So, as you heard, not in disagreement, that the pandemic has caused a great deal of social-emotional angst for students and staff throughout our district over the past two years now. What we are now starting to see well into the pandemic are large academic gaps. Now, we have long-faced students with academic gaps here in town, but they've been exasperated by some of the, you know, remote learning versus in-person learning, and the disruptions caused by the shutdown in 2020. We've also seen this year a particular increase in poor attendance, of course, again, exasperated by illness, and we've seen greater rates of trauma among our students. Staffing is becoming a significant issue across the Commonwealth, has been an issue for us. We were on a trajectory of remarkable improvement as far as retention, but this year, we've seen more staff choosing to leave the profession than we have in the past. Clearly, there's a lot of pressure on educators working in classrooms during a pandemic. We're also, as we're putting together our budget and making projections for line items for next year, we are definitely seeing dramatic increases in energy cost, supplies, you know, one that Mr. Racine brought to my attention is more than doubling the cost of copy paper. There's, inflation is going to have a major impact on materials and energy costs for us, and so that's something we consider as we move forward. Despite the pandemic, though, we've remained focused on three areas of priorities here in the district. Fortunately, in some ways, we've been working on climate and culture initiatives for the past four years. And I should take a moment and just, I'm proud of the fact that February 12th was my fourth year complete here in town, and I'm entered into year five. I know that some see me synonymous with receivership, but I think it's important that we've had stable leadership going into year five in the district, and, so, anyway. Our work on climate and culture is definitely making a difference. I have some data I want to share tonight. I will also foreshadow my plan on issuing a quarterly report to the school committee that'll have more data for you to take a look at in all of our areas of focus. Our climate and culture work has allowed us to keep, continue with our positive behaviors, interventions, and supports, which maintains a positive classroom environment. We are working to continuously implement tiered interventions for students, and we're implementing a program called City Connects, which I have mentioned before publicly. It's in partnership with a group out of Boston College, and it is allowing us to connect students. We actually do an individual student review process. Every student in every school has an academic review conducted by an adjustment counselor, and then we begin to assess which interventions are necessary, and then there's data tracked along those interventions. So, that review process is nearly complete. Year one is an arduous process. Our work on literacy in K-12, we continue to work on science-based reading instruction in our classrooms. We have continuously provided our teachers with professional development. We have deep partnerships with Hilkford Literacy and instruction partners, working with teachers across the district. Mathematics, we've been working with a group called Looney Math, implementing new math curriculum in our elementary schools, K through 5. We've also implemented 6 through 12 Illustrated Mathematics, which is a different series at our secondary schools, and we continue to move that forward. So, we haven't used the pandemic as a reason not to continue to move forward, and very proud of the teachers for continuing their effort to learn, grow, and implement new things during this tough time. As a year started, I just wanted to show, when we brought large numbers of kids back to school, full-time, full attendance, you can see our disciplinary referrals were much higher in September and October, and have now begun to decline. I will point out that the February data, I would ignore that, we're still in February, so there's still a little bit of time for those numbers to change a little bit, but January is a solid cutoff. And that reduction is clear, it's about what is being done in schools to address the various issues that result in these disciplinary infractions. I wanted to point out that part of our PBIS work is to collect data, and we use a survey, it's called the Georgia Climate Survey, it's a scientific instrument that was developed quite some time ago. We implement it every fall and every spring, and these data here, there's quite a few different years represented on the chart behind me, but I wanted to point out a few things, which, to me, jumped out. So, this is our overall class, excuse me, staff climate score. So, we survey our staff across the schools, and the overall score, obviously, the higher is better, and we saw some really remarkable increases over at Charlton Street School, it's quite notable. The middle school, which has long been the school that everyone in town talks about that's been, you know, a problem, has dramatically changed, and it, and again, when I have chances, I'm happy to bring any of you to go see the middle school. But they have posted a large growth, again, this is teacher reporting, in positive climate. And West Street School's been in upward trajectory, that's quite remarkable too, over the past three years. So, I wanted to highlight that. When we dig into the subscale scores of that survey, a couple areas popped up. Again, we're in a pandemic, a lot of people are worried about safety, but somewhat counterintuitive, I suppose, we have seen dramatic increase in the staff score around school safety. We've also seen a dramatic increase in parental involvement. I attribute that likely to policies that have required a lot of communication to families, and I think that continuous communication has underscored that we in fact do have many, many, many parents and families that are very interested in what's going on with our students here in town. And that's being kind of echoed now, staff has experienced that through these policy changes. Obviously, we're going to continue that work. The next chart here is secondary, is secondary students, so asking students about school. And again, I saw a couple areas that jumped out to me that I wanted to highlight. One is, I feel my school has high standards for achievement, and that has increased dramatically. My school set clear rules for behavior, that has dramatically increased. And these are two areas that I've heard repeatedly of areas of concern, and what our students are reporting to us is that their staff and the students are making dramatic progress. So, this is good, good news, particularly, again, with the backdrop of what we're dealing with in the pandemic. I mentioned attendance as a significant concern and issue, and so, over the last few years, we were making improvement in our overall daily attendance rate. This year, though, we have seen it plummet, so 87% on average at the moment. When we break it down by month, which is the lower chart behind me, you can see that when we hit December and January, that was the latest wave of Omicron, we dropped to 82%. We had lots of absences, both staff and students, of course, dealing with ramifications of the illness. If you look at it by week, you can see there's ebbs and flows, but we are definitely in an upward trajectory, and that's why I'm really hoping by the end of March, we won't be talking through these materials anymore. I'm hoping that we get to ourselves to a place where, you know, people aren't sick anymore, and as reflected in our attendance, things are improving. Well, another area that's very important to keep an eye on is the impact on our early literacy program. And so, when we look here, there's two graphs, and there are many subtests that we give, but these two really jump out. Letter naming fluency, critically important in kindergarten. And what we see when we look at winter '21 to winter '22, there's not much of a shift. There's a bit, but not a significant amount. We are definitely concerned that students who have had delays, preschool experiences, coming into school, these are critical skills that we're focused on trying to close this gap now. So, it's kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach in trying to get ahead of this. The second chart is phoneme segmentation fluency, breaking words into sounds, very important part of learning to decode and read. We've made progress, but we need to make dramatically greater progress over time for us to really close gaps. So, we're keeping an eye on this, we are, I've added, for example, two different teaching positions to this school. We've actually made a change in the leadership at the school, we've added educational assistance to the school, because it's critically important that we close gaps at early childhood, so that as children grow older, there's less that they're competing with, essentially, less deficits that they're bringing forward. So, we're investing a great deal in our Eastford Road School to improve upon these data, but I wanted to just transparently show you where we are at the moment. So, as we address the long-term impact, and as we're building out this budget, there'll be themes in social-emotional and academic support are two areas that we're concentrating on. I've mentioned City Connects. That's an additional staff member at every school, and a partnership with Boston College's City Connects program. It's a significant investment of our, some of our COVID-19 funds for that. We've increased the number of adjustment counselors at our schools, so you can see in the table below, every school has at least two adjustment counselors and an additional City Connects counselor working at each of the schools. At the high school, you'll see we also have guidance counselors at the secondary 9 through 12. We are also providing credit recovery for older students in our high school. We have Catapult Learning is a firm we've contracted with to provide after-school tutoring for students who are interested. I wish we had larger numbers participating at the moment, but it is, it is growing. Online educational programs, we are planning a vacation school for April, where students are going to be able to do some credit recovery work during that April vacation, and of course, there's going to be summer opportunities for credit recovery for students who are behind in their academic program. And this is, that's secondary school focus, our high school. We know we need to develop more programs around this to support our high school-aged kids. Not only have they been impacted by the pandemic, but they're also the students that have been part of the school district as we've rebuilt the elementary schools and changed how they operate, so there are a lot of learning gaps for these older children, and so we need to find different programs that meet the needs of different kids. programs that meet the needs of different kids. So that's the backdrop in which we are building out our budgets. The priorities are going to be around interventions for students academically and socially. So that shows up, and you'll see it in staffing as we produce reports. In every budget we've produced, shows you the staff, where they work, the number of people. I think that seventy, seventy-five percent of our cost every year is staffing. But those are going to be our dramatic focus. There will also be increases, unfortunately, in energy supplies and materials. Mr. Racine is going to now speak to you about the impact of enrollment on our budget process. He's going to talk to you about the increases in funding that we expect, which is good news. Massachusetts is doing a very good job of supporting school districts through, you know, this tough situation we've been in. And I think this is a time where Southbridge is reaping some benefits of our relationship at this point. So, Mr. Racine, if you could begin to walk us through district charter enrollment.
Thank you, Dr. Blurr.
If you'd like, I'll hit the button for you.
Thank you, Dr. Blurr. Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here to talk to you about the start of our fiscal year 2023 budget. As you are aware, the budget that we will be talking about going forward starts July 1 of the summer 2022, and it ends June 30 of 2023. As both the budget formula works and as we think about costs, it all starts with enrollment. And so we decided to first show you historically what has been happening in Southbridge. Previously, we've come to you and talked to you about the decline in enrollment in the district, but it's important to also understand the context. While the enrollment in the Southbridge Public Schools has slightly declined, it has not been as dramatic as a number of students have gone to charter schools. So back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, about five years ago, there were two thousand one hundred and twenty-two students and one student in a charter school. This past October, there was one thousand eight hundred and five students in the Southbridge Public Schools and one hundred and sixty-eight in charter schools. But there's also some good news here. If we go to the next slide here, students also have the option to choose districts through, through a program called School Choice. We have seen not only historic levels of students choosing Southbridge Public Schools, we have also seen some of the lowest levels in almost a decade of students choosing out. It is a real testament to the efforts that have happened in this district over the years. But as you see here, the last two years, fifteen and thirteen respectively, students chose Southbridge Public Schools to attend. And the number of students choosing out has seen a pretty substantial decrease from the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, where two hundred and seventy-four and two hundred and sixty, two hundred and sixty-eight students were choosing out, to now as few as two hundred and nineteen. So with that context in mind, for several years, we've been talking to you about the state funding formula. This is a major driver of the revenue to the town of Southbridge to support the public school system. And while there has been talk about trying to change and make, make changes to this formula for several decades, this is a formula that was implemented back in nineteen ninety-three. Two and a half years ago, through the act called the Student Opportunity Act, there were major changes to this, this formula known as Chapter Seventy. This is going to dramatically impact how much revenue the Southbridge Public Schools receives over a seven-year time period. So it's very important to understand, and we've been talking about this now for over two years, and you're going to really see the impacts in this coming year. But let's first make sure everybody understands how the formula works. There's two main parts to this formula. Part one of the Chapter Seventy formula is what is the minimum amount that every community should spend on education? The minimum, not the maximum, not the average, the minimum. So every year, the state calculates this based on enrollment. They have per pupil rates that they set every year, that they apply to the enrollment, that turns into this minimum floor, it's also known as the foundation budget. Once that minimum foundation budget is determined, they also then, they also then take part of it to say, well, how much of this minimum should be spent by local dollars and state tax dollars? For wealthier communities, they receive less state aid and more local revenue goes to meet this minimum floor. For less wealthier communities, they receive more Chapter Seventy formula. This is the state aid, the education aid known for doing this. So because state aid is driven, if we go to this first part, by the minimum amount, well, what's going to happen to these rates? And that's where the Student Opportunity Act comes into play. So if we go to the next slide here, slide sixteen. The Student Opportunity Act committed to substantial increases in these rates. So before this act, the Chapter Seventy rates were adjusted every year due to inflation, to the price deflator index, an index that was used, but it would be adjusted slightly every year. And after many years of debate, the legislature said, no, these rates need to be higher, especially for low-income students, English learners, and students with disabilities. So we have some examples here down below to show you what the rates were before this act was implemented in FY twenty-one, the lightest of the blue, all the way to the left, then last year, and then proposed for next year, FY twenty-three, and what we project them to be six years out. For an elementary school student, before the Student Opportunity Act was implemented, the, the rate was set at eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars per student. For next year, it's proposed to increase to eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And we project it could increase as much as nine thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars in FY twenty-eight. That's a pretty substantial increase, especially, as you can see, also demonstrated for high school. But where the, the percentage increases are even higher is if you look to EL, English Learners for Middle School or English Learners for High School. For High School, for example, before this act, it was, they would receive an additional amount, so think of this as an additive amount for an English learner. Before, it was one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Next year, that's two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, where it potentially could project to be over three thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Low-income students, previously before this act, it was four thousand six eighty-one. Next year, it's six thousand four seventy-seven. A very substantial increase, which will then correspond, as you remember from the first, from the conversation about the formula, this goes to making sure that there's more spent, both from the state level for state aid as well as locally. So if we go to the next slide, with these higher per pupil rates, this will lead to substantial minimum amounts spending levels in Southbridge. In FY twenty-one, and this is meant to be illustrative, the, the rates are differentiated, as we said, by grade level, by, by income, English learner status. But to demonstrate what this means, last year, the Southbridge formula worked, where there was two thousand two hundred and thirty-one students, for an average per pupil of thirteen thousand four thirty-eight per student, resulting in a minimum spending floor of twenty-nine million nine seventy-nine two forty-three. This current fiscal year, the year we're in right now, the enrollment actually went slightly down, two thousand two hundred and ten dollars. But the per pupil rate went up substantially to fourteen thousand four sixty-nine. Thirty-one thousand nine seventy-seven seven eighty-seven. In FY twenty-three, you can see, again, these numbers continue to increase, to now it's projected to be thirty-four million seven thirty-three nine eighty-three. If we go to the next slide here, we try to show an illustrative purpose of showing you how these numbers are projected to grow from thirty-one million nine seventy-seven, thirty-one million nine seventy-seven this year to thirty-four million seven thirty-three next year, potentially increasing to forty-four million in FY twenty-eight. So what does this mean for state aid? So if we go to the next slide, you'll see here, the, the foundation budget is this first level here. And so again, in FY twenty-three, in the governor's budget that was released in January, it's projected to be thirty-four million seven thirty-three. The required local contribution from local dollars is supposed to increase from eight point two eight million to eight point six million. This is an increase of four percent. But Chapter Seventy-eight, this is state aid to help pay for this increase, is projected to increase from twenty-three point seven million dollars to twenty-six point one million dollars, an increase of two point four million, ten percent increase for next year, to Southbridge to help pay for education. It is a, the net result for the net school spending amount is an increase of two point seven five six million dollars. Now, on the next slide, the, the larger umbrella here is about, we talked about overall education, but there are some components of it, in both in terms of receipts, which is known as aid for education, and there's assessments, these are costs that we need to pay back. So we want to highlight a few of these here. Chapter Seventy, we talked about, this is the general aid amount. But then also, there's an amount that goes for, we talked about charter schools. So charter schools for students from ascending districts who attend a charter school, they receive an equivalent per pupil amount. Yet for that transitionary period, the local community does receive some money for it. And that's what you see here, the charter tuition reimbursement is temporary aid to help with the loss of the students that go to these charter schools. So for next year, in FY twenty-two, Southbridge received five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in charter tuition reimbursement. That's projected to increase to one point one million dollars. But assessments, these are costs in, for education-related purposes. We've talked about in this, in, in a previous slide, the number of students choosing out of Southbridge is going down. Well, this cost is going to go down next year, too. So instead of, this current year, it's one point four three seven million, next year it's going to be one point three four eight million dollars. Charter tuition, though, as we talked about, the number of students choosing charter schools will be increasing, and that'll be going from one point nine six million to two point seven million dollars. Finally, students with disabilities who are served in state institutions will be increasing from thirty thousand dollars to fifty-seven thousand, fifty-seven thousand dollars. Ultimately, the net result to Southbridge is an increase in net aid from twenty point eight million dollars to twenty-three point one million dollars, a two point two eight million dollar increase. So this, this, these estimated revenues are going to be very helpful as we build the budget. We're in the process of building the budget, thinking about now, what are these expenses? We talked about earlier of thinking about that. So when we come back to you, we're going to be presenting a comprehensive budget as we have, that will show you and talk in more detail about the revenue that we're receiving for state aid. They'll talk about the role of grants, we have a number of grants, and how do those play into the big picture? And then what are the expenses that we're able to afford for next year's budget? There's been a lot of conversation over the years, and every year, we've tried to add more and more detail. But after last year's conversation, we've had extensive meetings and including a meeting with the Town Education and Human Services Subcommittee in the fall, and talked about a more detailed budget document. And this, this slide here is meant to show you just a, a sample of what you will be seeing from a line item budget level. So for every department and school, you will see it with the account number and account description, two years of actual expenses, what the current budget is, what the proposed budget will be, and the variance, to try to give you a holistic picture of how we are projected to spend our budget. Please note that these numbers are just for illustrative purposes, these are not real, but meant to sort of show you what you will be seeing in a very comprehensive book that I'll be showing you later this spring.
So that's our, our budget revenue projection and kind of overview of what we're dealing with as we're putting together the budget. Again, we plan on having a follow-up meeting with this group. We'll have a public hearing first, and then a formal budget presentation, as we've done each year. After that, then we will be presenting to the town council when invited and making our formal ask of the town for their support of the school district. I appreciate your patience. I don't know if there are questions that, that came to mind while we were speaking. Certainly happy to answer them. Does anybody have any questions for the receiver? Mr. Mello?
Yes, I know that in December, we had a training with Tracy Novak, and one of the comments that she made was that with this new budget and the things that are happening, there would be additional aid coming, and one of her recommendations was that as a school committee, which of course, we don't make normal decisions as a school committee right now, but that for our town, one of the things she would suggest if we were able to make decisions for the town was that we strongly consider using some of that increase in budget money for maintenance, and especially for some of the backlog maintenance. And her comment was that even with the normal operations budget, there are some maintenance things that can be done with that budget that would not necessarily fall to the town. And so I was just wanting to find out if that was something you were considering in your plans for this coming year and in your thinking towards where to put this, this new money.
Sure, thank you. So first, we don't know what, of the two point two million roughly that's projected to be increase in education funding coming to the town, at the moment, I don't know how much of that will be directed directly to the operating budget of the schools. It's ultimately going to be the decision of the town council. Although, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Racine, the floor is probably about a million two.
Correct.
So likely, we have to receive somewhere between a million two increase and a two point two. All right, so there's, that's the wiggle room that ultimately the town council is going to have some choice over. To your point around maintenance, you know, the report that we reviewed at our last meeting, you know, we're, we're in a kind of what ballpark of thirty million dollars in need of absolute maintenance. In conversation with the town manager, so in other words, this isn't going to do that, but in conversation with the town manager, I am open to conversation with leaders on the town council as well, to talking about, is there a way to utilize some of that extra funding, assuming we can, again, be granted that funding, to help us with the need to conduct the study so that we can then, an engineering study, so that we can then apply for Massachusetts School Building Authority appropriation for roofs of our three elementary schools at a minimum. There's also doors, windows, and boilers. Like, it could be an opportunity to use that funding to get the proper plans and paperwork and applications that are necessary in place to receive up to eighty percent of state funding for the repairs on our buildings. So that's a conversation that needs to happen at greater length. I am open to that conversation. Do we need all this funding? Of course, we are a district that's been in the third percentile for performance for quite some time, so clearly, we need some services. But at the same time, schools exist in an ecosystem, so we have to look at this holistically and also plan for the future. So there needs to be, you know, some really good dialogue around that. Again, we've had some preliminary conversation with the town manager, talking about how we might navigate this. Because there is another pitfall here, which is the closer to the minimum funding levels we receive this year, the larger the increase likely the town the town will need to fund next year. And it begins to put a lot of financial pressure on the town moving forward if you slip behind on the mandated required payments. So it's just, you know, you can pay a little extra every year and make that future bill a little lower, is kind of the concept. That's out of my hands, but it's something that I continually talk about. So again, open to that, I do think this is a time where the town has to be very careful about its planning on the expenditures, because education, required educational spending is going to continue to go up at this steep level that we see, while at the same time, there are other fiscal constraints coming to the town, firehouse, roadwork, casella trash issues. I know the town council's grappling with all of that, and so, you know, it's important to know the context.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, my wondering is this, that when the town council, this has nothing to do with us, but when the town council puts together their budget, there's a part of that budget that's going to be under the EHS subdivision, and, which is the schools as well. And would there be also an increase, or with that in mind, when they look at the tax situation? I'm not one who likes to raise taxes, but I also am a realist, and I realize that there are certain things, I think that our kids are probably the most important commodity that we have, and we have to invest in their future, and we have to look to perhaps raise some taxes to accommodate the betterment of the schools, whether it's maintenance, or teacher salaries, or improved conditions in other areas, staff. So would that also be a contributor? Would they have to look at, would the town council have to look at their budget in that regard, too? So in other words, they're not getting all this money from just the state, they're getting money from the town as well. They have the responsibility as well, so I'm wondering if that would be an asset.
Yeah, so I think what's important for people who are concerned about the implications with taxes on this, is that the increase in state aid can completely cover Southbridge's mandated contributions to education and far exceed it. So they could pass through $2.2 million of state aid, which would then cover the required increase of roughly $400,000 in local contributions, and all of the rest of that aid is direct support from the state. The vast majority of our education is paid for by the state here in Southbridge. There is a component of local taxes that do pay for it. So that dramatic increase, to be clear, does not translate into a dramatic tax increase at the local level. However, those other items I talked about are the constraints that the town council has to consider as it appropriates funding. So that as they incorporate our funding, they're thinking about police, fire, roads, DPW, all those other expenses. And that, of course, in the future, particularly is what I'm thinking of, if we're not careful in how we manage the increases in state required spending for education and state aid, it could begin to put a lot of pressure on the local tax dollar, right, and then require potential increases. So that's why navigating this and having that conversation is very important.
Thank you.
Right, are there any other questions for the receiver? Mr. Messier?
Thank you, Mr. Merch. When did you say that you were looking to have the budget completed by?
Good question. I think we presented in April, I don't have the date set, but we generally have to present it in April because we are before the town council in May.
Okay, thank you. And also, I just wanted to commend the progress that's being made with the climate of the schools.
Mr. Messier, I hate to interrupt you, can you bring your mic closer, it's hard to hear you.
Thank you. I also just wanted to just commend you on the progress that's being made with the climate in the schools. Thank you for bringing this data, I think it's very helpful, especially for the community to check out and understand that, excuse me, you know, we're making progress, you know, attendance is a huge thing for every single school, and when we see attendance rates going up like we're seeing here, then that's fantastic, and feedback from teachers and students in a positive way, that's fantastic also, so thank you for bringing that and making that part of the presentation today.
Thank you, and again, in my quarterly report, there'll be more information on those items for you.
Real, I do have a couple of questions myself. On slide 17, excuse me, you have the FY '20, '23 at $14,365 per student, when we're talking about a net increase, was that just, is that what we're looking at numbers-wise? Because the math to $34...
No, it's not, it's, there needs to be corrected, so.
If you can get us a corrected one, just so we can refer to it, that would be greatly appreciated, I know you've got other stuff to worry about, so as soon as, at your convenience, I would greatly appreciate that, that way we can present more accurate information to the public. And you're looking at presenting this, the public hearing, you said you're looking at March or April?
No, we typically do a public hearing before a school committee meeting in April.
Okay.
And then we'll present the formal final budget to the town council, trying to adhere to a more typical budget cycle, so, you know, if I were superintendent presenting to a school committee, we'd have that formal budget meeting after the public hearing to the town, the, excuse me, the school committee, and then the school committee budget goes to the town council. So we're going to continue to emulate that process.
All right, and one last thing, and I do appreciate y'all's time this evening. So it would be fair to assume with the Student Opportunity Act that through FY '23, yes, we are looking at a net increase in the state aid, but we are also most likely looking at a net increase in required local contribution to make sure we don't fall behind, as far as once the Student Opportunity Act, that seven-year cycle peaks, because it's going to increase aid from the state, but it's going to increase our local contribution as well. Is that correct? Or am I misunderstanding that?
Well, the local, the local contribution does increase every year with a more, right now, at least, state aid is vastly outpacing that local increase, so it has covered the local increase. This is in Chapter 70, so at the end of this cycle, that's where Chapter 70 funding levels will be. Now, the legislature would have to act to change that, you know, but we'd be, where this projects out, we'll be at that local contribution level, and we'll be at that state level of support at that time.
And at this time, Southbridge only contributes a quarter for every dollar that's spent in our public schools, would that also be a fair assessment?
I'm, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Is it Southbridge, the town of Southbridge itself only contributes about a quarter for every dollar spent on our school system at this point with the current foundation budget? Would that be a fair assessment?
Sounds about right.
All righty, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any other questions? Mr. Mello?
Yeah, I just wanted to really quickly say to Megan that I am so thankful that you came tonight, and probably the most exciting thing that has happened tonight to me is the fact that you were here, and that you're showing that parents in the school are really concerned about their kids, about their kids' education, and about what's going on at the schools. And I know that parents are such a huge part of education, and such a huge part of the success of our schools, that we really cannot do this without you guys. And I don't want you to leave thinking that you came and it was kind of a waste of time, and we didn't really listen to you, and I want you to know that we heard what you said, and that your opinion really does matter to us. And if I could make one recommendation to you, I would say, if you know of other people who are also of similar minds to you, I would have them email us. All of our email addresses are on the school website, I believe Dr. Villar's email is probably there also. And while, on the one hand, no, parents are not ultimately making the decision, Dr. Villar is making the decision according to what he thinks is wise and most beneficial for the school, at the same time, we don't have a school without students, and we don't have students without parents making the decision to have their children come to our school. And so your opinion does matter to us, and it does ultimately matter to Dr. Villar also. And if you email us, we would love to hear from you, and that would be helpful to us. I've actually been curious for a while now to know what parents were thinking about the mask situation at the school, and it's actually interesting to me to hear your perspective and your point of view, so please communicate with us, okay? Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Villar and Mr. Racine?
Thank you, gentlemen, very much for a well-put-together presentation. We are going to look forward to more in the future, and I'll communicate with you within the coming weeks, because, you know, I bug you at least once a month, so.
Excellent.
Going ahead and moving on to agenda item number five, chairperson's announcements. Just a quick note, a little bit of civics engagement here, nomination papers are available at the city clerk's, or at the town clerk's office. The last day to turn in nomination papers is May 12th, or, excuse me, Tuesday, April 26th. We have multiple positions open, including two three-year terms for the school committee and two one-year terms for the school committee as well. The Bay Path Vote Tech Committee has its open position for three years, the Redevelopment Authority has one open position for five years, the Housing Authority also has a position open for five years, and there are three town council seats, each of three-year terms, that are also open as well. The only way to make change is to get involved. Politics and governance starts at the local level, so if you want to impact the day-to-day goings-on here in town, I would encourage you to get involved. I started three years ago, and I don't think I've made a better decision as far as volunteering and civic engagement than being involved with the school committee and Redevelopment Authority, as all the people in the day has have gotten involved with the school committee as well. So people signing up to put their name forward for local governance has always been an issue for the town of Southbridge, and we are going through a wave of change in various different aspects here in town. So if you want your voice heard, or you feel like you can make a difference, go ahead and pull papers, you only need 39 certified signatures this year, so it'll be easy to get on the ballot, and it might be a little bit harder to run the campaign, but anything that's worth it isn't easy. So I would encourage you to put your name out there and get involved here in town. We're on the upswing overall, schools, public infrastructure, and private businesses coming into town as well, so there is progress being made, so now's the chance to get involved with it. So I'd greatly appreciate anyone and everyone who wants to get involved with local town governance. I'm going to go ahead and move on to agenda item number six, member forum. I'm going to start over here, do you have anything to say, Mr. Messier, in regards to anything maybe not on the agenda or on the agenda tonight?
No, I don't have anything to say today.
All righty, move down the line here, Mr. McKenzie?
Nothing at this point, thank you.
Ms. Appiore?
I just want to thank you for presenting us with this pamphlet, it's helpful to be able to have something in hand to look over, and it helps to understand things, and for both of your presentations tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, Ms. D'Amelio, do you have anything else you would like to add?
Um, but a lot, just a quick comment, that I did get to meet with Dr. Villar a couple of weeks ago, and just appreciate his taking the time to meet with all of us, I know you're busy and you have a lot going on. We are all seriously interested in the school, and in being involved and in helping in any way that we can, and we greatly appreciate your willingness to give us tours of the school and sit down and chat with us, so, thank you.
My pleasure.
All righty, seeing no other comments, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting for this evening? All right, so I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second, all of those in favor? Is unanimous of all present, this meeting is adjourned.